This is the July 12, 2023 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped. We do have a forum. The first item on the agenda today is the secretaries report from Wednesday, June 14. Anyone have any clarifications or questions on those minutes?
No. Make motion to accept the minutes from last meeting.
No second.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye. Thank you. Next is the budget.
Alright, so we are now in FY24. So we finished FY23 in total 98.2% spent. For the salaries, we were under a little bit because the director, you know, left. And then Sandra's line, so the patron service supervisor was over, but it was covered by the absence of the previous director. Everything else is pretty much the same. And then under operating, under energy, I am waiting on one more bill from Eversource. So that's roughly 500. So that will bring that percent slightly off of being spent in energy. Other than that, it's pretty much solid. And we are currently starting to use funds in FY24.
Any questions about the budget?
Yes.
Yes. Custodian?
Yes.
Oh, Eversource, is that something we need to pay attention to from this day?
Well, so the custodian is no longer ours.
Okay.
So we're not paying the custodian. I am scheduling. It's still, there's still a lot of spoken here, if you say, of scheduling for the meantime, that I know payroll is still iffy. And the town has, Town Hall has asked our custodian to do a task that is not involved in the library. So I spoke with Rick and Tanya from Town Hall, because they were asking for something, and he's doing it this Thursday. It's because it's brand new in the terms of his position being there, there's still a lot to sort out.
Will that eventually be removed since you're not paying for the stuff?
Yes, so for FY24, so for July, it will be there.
And for the, so once we take the 500 out of the energy bill?
Yes.
Roughly 500.
Mm-hmm.
So are we expecting to turn back to Town Hall? About 4,000, right? 4,500-ish?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And that last energy bill is the last thing?
The last thing that I can see, I mean, you know, yeah, I have done things already in FY24, but everything that I know of has been paid.
Okay.
But, you know, things happen. Little things sneak in, or, you know, I'm only human, maybe I missed something, but I did catch the Eversource bill, and then everything else. And then the material is pretty, it's done, and I haven't even touched that line at all. I've been using STEP lead for certain things. But everything else is done.
On materials, you went, it's over the 4,000?
It is.
That purchasing the books, that's how it is?
And I believe that's covered by the overage in the sales line.
Yes.
You talked about that a couple times with the, the sales line had a discount this year. So the materials overage was covered by that line.
And there's still some, I need to look back to see what the discount was. I know we're receiving bills very shortly from sales for this year for the network. I just haven't received them yet.
Does anybody have any other questions on that?
The bottom line is still divided.
Yeah. Yep.
For sure.
I mean, it's been a, you know, it's staff, we still have a vacant position, so there's a lot, you know, me coming into like the end of this, like.
It'll be easier now.
Yes, now I'm like, I know what I'm starting with, I know.
Right, plus it's hard with the history, how did we get to here?
Yes.
So it's absolutely. So do we get FY24?
That's good, we had such an overage on the average.
Right.
Yeah, I, energies.
It's the one that's almost there.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't know how much a building is, you know, which energy is like, at least like a home, but I'm just like, oh, that's a key.
Right, exactly.
That's something we have to do.
No, not at all, not at all.
No one has any other questions?
Make motion to accept the budget.
No second. All in favor?
Right.
Aye. Old business, we have updates on the plumbing and the bathroom.
Alright, so our plumbing situation. So in the public bathroom, so the one on the left side of the building, your faces. Has been having issues. First, that was the urinal. There was a piece that corroded, it was fixed. And then last Wednesday, we had an issue with the toilet being clogged. So it was a concert night, so the bathroom was in constant use. I tried three different plunges. Sandra tried unclogging it, and we weren't successful. So we shut down the bathroom, and we had the one, the bathroom on the right side for everyone to use. The following morning, I called a plumber. They came in within the hour, they took a look at it, they explained that they don't have an industrial snake, so they just used what they had, they were able to unclog it. So they flushed it about six times to make sure that the water was going, you know, flowing freely, and it was perfect. So the plumber wanted to take a look downstairs, so I went downstairs. He actually explained to me the pipes, which I thought would be really good to know. And he mentioned to me that while he was doing this, the water was starting to bubble in the hole. So what that means is that the septic tank is. So I looked at our records, I reached out to Dina to confirm that the last time the septic tank was pumped was in 2021. So I, on Friday, left a message for Mr. Sesspool. Monday, they sent someone else, and they pumped it. So they have been emptied. Unfortunately, they didn't leave an invoice, so I can't tell you how much. But in the past, I've seen that it's roughly like 350, but this was two years ago. As you know, things have gone up, so we'll just wait on that. But at least I know those tanks are clean as of July 2024. We haven't had.
2023. Oh, you're in FY24.
Life goes by fast. From Russia.
FY24.
2023.
2023.
It's been great this 2021.
For, no worries.
Anyway, so I know that it's emptied, it's clean, and if we are having more issues with the plumbing, at least we know it's not the septic tank. And if something, if the toilet gets clogged, or, yeah, I guess if the toilet gets clogged, we need to get a plumber that has industrial tools to figure out what's going on between, you know, the building and the septic tank, which is in the back parking lot. So I was extremely happy that they came in, that they were here within a day, not even to empty it. And, you know, we do have our concerts on Wednesday, so they, you know, that bathroom has been taking a lot of use. And, you know, I guess there's two septic tanks back there, so that bathroom is now constantly being used as opposed to this restroom, which, you know, staff is using, so it's not extreme, but.
But did they mention when they were here, how often they thought it should be pumped?
Well, when I mentioned that it was last pumped in 2021, yes.
Funny, during COVID too.
Yeah, yeah, so it's like, I know we weren't, we weren't open. Yeah, so.
Should a schedule be?
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Be reactive, be reactive?
Right? I was thinking like every, once a year or every other?
Unfortunately, you were here before any of us were in the building, so I wanted to ask, you know, the level, like, you know, how much, but it was done by the time I got here.
Maybe we could always have it done maybe next year and then see, and then if they say, hey geez, it was, because now we're in a full-blown year of doing things.
Yes.
So then maybe if we do it next year, and then they say, well geez, this tank's only a quarter full, then we'll know, well, hey, we can probably go every two. But if they say, wow, you're teetering on like clogging toilet issues, then we did the right thing.
Yeah. I think that's a wonderful idea to do a schedule, and I can ask them to, I could give them a call to ask if they, maybe they know how much was in it when they.
Right.
I don't know if they keep track of that, but if they do, okay.
And I mean, you could always just bump it up to be like, you know, do it before summer reading starts. Like, it doesn't have to be like July, like this week or whatever. It could always be like either right before, you know, and then, or if you wanted to do it right, like after summer reading, like in the fall.
So the summer.
There's some concerts, like.
You've got a couple hundred.
Yes.
So if you do it before, you know, I mean, if you do it maybe like June-ish?
Yeah, I think the, like, the second week of June, the third week is when we started the summer concert, there is.
So maybe, yeah.
That's when it has constantly.
So maybe if you do it like just before.
That door is unlocked during the concert.
So if you schedule it like maybe like first week in June-ish, then you'll be, at least then you will know that's not the problem going forward.
I think that's a great idea. So like before, because, you know, that is the busier time in the, in the library.
And then like you said, you do it in June, and they come, and they're like, why are you pumping this? There's nothing here, then you could be like, oh, well, two years. I don't know, you see.
So, and that's where I am with the plumbing, so, you know, then come in.
And so that's all taken care of.
Yes, yep, knock on wood, not just that wood, but tonight, you know, we do have our concerts, so it will be a big test to see how it performs out of the way. Can try to walk toilets.
I know, it's okay. Did you have any other updates that you had for the old business?
What was just the plumbing?
The, I paid the invoice for the plumbing, so the, the urinal, so that was $165.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, very good. And moving on to new business, the quote regarding the purchase of five new staff computers.
So before the previous director left, I have notes of items that they wanted to complete before they left. And one of them was to purchase new staff computers. I have a quote here for five desktop computers. The computers we currently have, I couldn't find when we received them, but I can tell from the hardware in the computers that they're from 2014. The computers we currently have cannot upgrade to Windows 11 because the memory is, it's too short of, in order to do an upgrade. I've been noticing that my computer has been giving me the blue screen desk more frequent now. I don't know why, and every time I try to capture the image of it, it goes away. So, and then staff have noticed that their computers out at the desk are running slower. So this quote is, so we do purchase computers through sales. They sent me a quote for five of the desktops. We have a quote for $3,616.00 for five new staff computers. I also added the monitors. The monitors we have right now are 19 inches. I'm still on the fence if we do need new monitors or if just Sandra and I need a bigger monitor for our, I, you know, I use a lot of Excel sheet. She does a lot of creative, using creative software. It would be easier for us. So I, and I don't know if I need it for the staff computers. I know a lot of the program we use workflows, it's, a lot of it is cut off on the screen, and I've tried playing with the resolution on the computers to have it all on one screen, but it just won't fit. So I'm still working on that, but I did pull a quote from sales. And if we were to go ahead, I do have, the money, the money would be taken from our stock. I mean, I do know that the five computers are definite, but the monitors are still on the fence of. So right now, each monitor is 151. And then if you wanted to get all five new monitors, it would be $755.35. So I guess what I'm asking is if it would be all right to do, proceed. I mean, if we do proceed this, I know it's going to be a while for us to get these because they have to be programmed by George from sales, and it's just, you know, I'm pretty sure you swap, you know, it's the beginning of the fiscal year, and other libraries are probably doing the same thing.
Is that how you delay the software?
It does, yes. The only thing, which I had a question, and I did respond to, who said this? To at sales, it says, no Microsoft Office license included. So, I mean, do we have to repurchase one? And I asked, she's like, you don't have it. So I'm like, okay, I need more information here. So I'm going to have to call them and see how this works. Because we all have Microsoft Office, you know, not the latest, but we have it. So I, I'm just, that's the only thing that I'm puzzled on, and I will have to ask them. But everything else is pretty up to date, very basic. You know, we're not asking for a gaming computer here, but it is definitely more powerful than what we have right now. And, you know, I think they have Windows 10, but they can't be upgraded to Windows 11. So I would assume that if we were to get them, so what would happen is George would basically mimic what we have and just put it all on Windows 11.
So they want to give you a site license?
Yeah.
Would that should come with upgrades, would I think?
Yeah, I, I know when these computers went from Windows 9 to 10, we did it all in, you know. But if he's taking what we have here to mimic, you know, the towers that we have here, if he's taking what we have here to mimic on the new computers, I'm assuming he would just put up, you know, Windows 11, because he's already upgrading everything.
If I'm not mistaken, in the school, there was a site license for the software package.
So maybe that's what we have here already, and that's why it's not listed as.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll investigate that further to see.
Nick might be able to help you with that.
He was just here too. He just installed it.
Yeah, give Nick a call, he'll probably at least elaborate on.
Yes.
So you would definitely get two monitors for certain, or not sure? Still on the fence about all of them?
I'm still on the fence about them.
Okay, that's fine.
But the desktops are a definite.
Yeah, that's okay.
At least I know we need the monitors, I, I'm still on the fence. But I did want to throw it out there and see the cost of them. So I, I definitely, definitely do believe we do need new computers, staff computers.
Cost of the whole business.
Mm-hmm, I know.
So I think, if my math is correct, $4,372.15?
If we get the five.
Was that right? Monitor, okay. If we get the five monitors, so we can just proceed ahead if everyone thinks that's a good idea and just approve it with the five, and then that way, I mean, if it's less, it's fine, but then we're not having to do more.
I'd say if we have the money, we should do it.
Plus, if you have the room, I mean, if the room is okay with the.
On the desk, we'd ask.
So then I think the.
Yes, yes. Couldn't find the eight in the monitors.
But I mean, if you have the room, and it's not like, no, no, not looking at people like sideways, and I think.
We would go from 19 to 23.
Oh, okay.
So it's not that.
It's not like the.
Where is it said? Yeah, 23.8, so the eight is probably the black on the side.
Right. Do you have any questions? I do.
Motion group?
No question.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. And moving on to the director's reports.
So before I go into the director's report, and this is part of it, so we do have our monthly statistics here. I did add a new category, which is the highly, highest daily checkouts, which happened on June 20, which is the day after a holiday, which is normal for most libraries. So that day, we checked out 272 items. And then for our programming section, we had our highest number of patrons here for the Pearly Baker Concert Series. So on June 28, we had roughly 275 people outside. It was amazing. Yeah, it was amazing, and it was.
I think that was one seventh day last year.
Yeah, so we beat it.
Wow.
I told Sandra, I said, no, let me get 200, no.
They just kept coming.
It was absolutely amazing to see. I know.
No wonder the bathrooms didn't use.
Yes, I'm like, no. I mean, you know, we have the key there, but the key just constantly is getting handed out back and forth during the concert series. And then we also, we also have the key for this one, so we have both.
Right.
But like, you know, the amount of people that day, and then last week was also pretty well-received. And then tonight, we'll see how that.
It happened 200 for last week.
Oh, my goodness.
Again.
Incredible.
It's amazing, Sandra did such a wonderful job, and it's been so well-received, and, you know, the word has gone out, and tonight, we have that room. So if you're a Johnny Cash fan, come on by.
Right, yeah.
That might, hopefully, the clouds will stay, so it won't be as sunny. Alright, so that's, you know, the, our study rooms. One more thing about the statistics, they're really popular. I'm so surprised at that. So this morning, we had two people, and the first two people through the door went to get a study room, and I am amazed at that, and I think it's wonderful that people are noticing that we have spaces for them to come and, you know, if they need a quiet place to study or do a Zoom call, that they're, they're coming to use it. And it gives us the opportunity to also show what else we have to offer here besides study rooms. So, you know, 41 for the month of June was really good. And then let me go on to the director's report here. So we have started summer reading. As of right now, we have a little over 225 patrons signed up. So that includes children from ages four all the way up till nine, and then we have our young adults and adults. We have seen the desks become very busy, which is what happens in the summer. We have our programming, and, you know, the kids are around the school, so they're coming here to grab their books for summer reading, which we also have listed in the children's room, have for Acushnet in summer for St. Francis. And just some highlights from the director's report. I've done three payrolls so far. One payroll was just for the, the new fiscal year, so it was only a Saturday. So it was six, three people that were paid with FY24, and that was added to that pay period. I have been delivering invoices, quoting them to the finance department. I have done two turnover deposits so far. I have met individually with each employee and have had kind of like an informal meeting. So I had their personal, the PAS filled out, so that's their new rate for the new fiscal year, you know, just simply it's PAS. Personal, something file, drawing blank on the A.
Okay, come on.
Assessment file? So each one receives one at the new fiscal year and year anniversary date. And so it was a perfect opportunity to meet with everyone, so that way, you know, they would get their, either they would step up, or they would meet. It was a good opportunity to meet with everyone and just ask, how have you been going? You know, is there anything I can do that could help, you know? So that was, and I did it within two days, so that was really good. Because I was like, when am I going to meet with everyone, there's so much going on? But, and those have already been submitted to Town Hall, and they've already been processed because the payroll already has the new rates for them. So that, that was a good thing. I am currently doing the steps for state aid, so right now, I am doing the collects part, which is statistics. And some of the items they need are still not out yet, either from sales or from the STE, but I'm in the process of it. So I'm doing it, plugging along. I had to ask some questions because I didn't know the level of education some staff had. I didn't hire, so I don't have that, as it is. So it's going, and that's going to be a long process throughout the entire summer. So it's, it's going, and that's gonna be a long process throughout the entire summer. And, let's see. So I mailed in my certificate of librarianship. It was received on the seventh, July third. They sent me an email that it won't be processed until the MBLC have their meeting in August. So what that means is that the, there's another sheet that I had to fill out for the acting director, so, because I didn't have a certificate yet, I had to write in process, and it was processed. The, the actual changing of the director sheet was processed there, so that's all said. It's just, you know, we have to wait till, till they have their meeting, so I can get, I don't know if it's a number or just an actual piece of paper, but I had to submit my degree and, you know, go through my entire education, and I'm going to review it. So I have added, for myself, I've added drop-in crafts to the July calendar. As you know, we're still without a children's room assistant, so we do not have storytime, but I really wanted to add items, programs for children. So we did drop-in crafts, we have Legos, I booked Mr. Vinnie the Bubble Guy for July eighteenth. So these were in addition to what was already done previous, for the previous director. So hopefully we'll have a good turnout for Mr. Vinnie. We'll have our first midday movie this Friday. And the other thing I want to mention is, so it was mentioned earlier that, I was like, yeah, Nicholas here. So the reason Nicholas here was, last Monday, I received a text message that internet was down, wasn't working. That happens, so, like, the text messages, it was, it wasn't something I could fix easily through a text. So I came in earlier and tried everything that I could, routers downstairs, check the wires and so forth. So I contacted sales, I contacted Comcast, and I contacted Nick from Town Hall. So I was, sales said it was a Comcast issue, contact Comcast. Comcast was gonna send someone over between four and six, so this was the best part. And, you know, we're open until seven thirty, sadly. So I, I don't know that Nick has a way of seeing like the network on his phone, you know, to... Beyond my knowledge of technology. So bottom line is that what happened was he discovered that the bottom power unit was dead. The backup battery was burned, so that's what happened. So he ordered a backup battery and he came in to install it today. Meanwhile, this Monday and this morning, it was down again. I know Monday, I think we had storms up here, last night, I don't remember raining or storms, so I don't know why the power went out. So most likely the power went out sometime, and the good news is that I know how to just reset it. And now that we have a new backup battery, we should be good to go if the power was out, which happens a lot here. And we did it rain here. So, and at least, you know, if I'm not here and let Sandra know, I'm here to restart the power source for the servers and Comcast. So that was taken care of. And, you know, as soon as they went down, rebooted it this morning, it took about fifteen minutes to come up, and then it was perfect. And then, so that's that about the, the internet issue that we had. I had my first department head meeting at the selectmen's office on June twenty-first. We, a little update, so we should be getting our new generic library signs and locations in a push-in at some time in July. So this came about, I said something during my first selectmen meeting about the lack of generic blue library signs with the stick figure holding a book. So I mentioned that at the meeting, and a couple of days, I received a call from Kathy from DPW asking to meet. So we met, and the locations that I chose for the signs to be placed are Nice Lane in Middle, which is right here, Lennon Street in Middle Road, Lake Street in Middle Road, Middle Road in Bellevue Ave, which is that weird little pork there. And hopefully, once construction gets done, he'll land in Maine. But, you know, we have to wait.
Just didn't realize we didn't have them.
There's no...
But you see the napkin, it's in there, right here.
We think they might have been up when Russell, when we were at Russell Mills, and then when it was closed, they might have taken down, not to confuse people.
I don't ever see them.
No, I don't.
You see them in other places, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I realize.
Yeah. So they were extremely, DPW were extremely helpful, and they were like, yeah, this is great, we'll, we'll, you know, set aside some money and we'll go ahead and, and work on this, so. And they said it would be FY twenty-four in July, you know, still early, but...
Have you kind of been sticksy? It's not like you've been on something on a sidewalk.
No, friend, no.
Very, I have questions, but where has not, you mean, have you?
I know, and my initial thing was, well, Lake or Leonard, which one's more busy? I'm like, why not both? I was like, yeah, okay, go ahead, put them on both. And then pretty, you know, spread apart, so it's not like, you know, not to that size, right?
Right.
But that's exciting, so I'm really looking forward to that. And with that wraps my director's report.
Anyone have any questions? Seems like we've been pretty busy.
Extremely busy. It's, it's summer, so, you know, on top of everything being new to me, you know, and, you know, at the desk, and, you know, it's, it's a lot, but I'm, I'm slowly but surely I'll get there.
Good.
Will you be giving us monthly reading, measurement reports?
Like the statistics? Yes, yeah, the statistics and the budget, yes, unless you want something else.
No, no, I just think that's very interesting, see how many people watch.
It is.
It is. I like the people counter.
Yes, we have to talk about that at a future meeting, too, a people counter. They used to have, we used to have one at the door.
Yes.
Like, but now, right now, it's manual, right?
Yes, we're...
So, yeah, so I know that at one point, we had talked about getting a new people counter. So if you come across it in your travels or, you know, when you're looking at stuff, we'll see what you can, yeah, see what you can get, you know, for a quota or whatever, so that we can see if we can get one. That way, it will at least take one less thing at the store.
It wasn't the best, we would always have to divide it by two, because sometimes it was outrageous, numbers were just like...
Well, if you come in one door and not the other, it's not like open or not.
I, I don't know.
How can you tell if you're coming in or going out?
I don't know.
True, that's how it was just like the door opening?
Yeah, it was just a mo, it was just a little black box that would just, you know, and then if you have a little paper, they're not gonna be counted if they're like walk, walkway, you know. It's...
What can I talk about?
Yeah, see, if not...
Yeah, I mean, there's really fancy ones that, you know, you put them on the ceiling and they monitor like movement going down, but...
That's, that's too, that's too...
Like, that's a...
We wouldn't.
Wow.
That's like something fully new, all right.
All right. We already have our meeting set for, our date set for the next meeting, which is Wednesday, August ninth at twelve-thirty, is that still good for everyone?
I think maybe a little late, Dan has some eleven o'clock.
Okay, okay.
But I think I should be here.
Do you want to leave it at twelve-thirty, or do you want me to move it to one o'clock?
If you can move it to one o'clock.
Does one o'clock work for everyone? Okay. All right, so we will do Wednesday, August ninth at one o'clock. And if we don't have any other business, then maybe a motion. All in favor? This July twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Cushing Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is one-ten. Thank you.